Today we're going to call regular monthly meeting in the Elswood City Council order, Monday, October 16th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Councilor Hudson is absent, remained or present. Item two, pledge of allegiance, please stand while we recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, we follow Robert's rules of order plus rules and procedures adopted at the annual organizational meeting. At this point, anyone in the audience having a cellphone or a pager, I would appreciate it either being off or silent. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meeting, the Elswood City Council, 9/18/2017, regular monthly meeting.
So movement, Chairman?
Second. Moves in second, all those in favor, unanimous. Item five, city managers' reports for the month.
Yep, just a couple things. The harbor is now closed after another successful season. And at Norton Park, the splash pad, if you're still looking to hit the splash pad too late, it's shut down along with the Comfort Station. And again, thank you to all the volunteers and staff and community members who've made both venues successful this year.
That's it. Thank you.
That's it.
Item six, committee reports, any committees that met during the month, councilor representatives that attended those, bring us any news from those meetings.
I have one.
Mr. Moore.
I attended the harbor meeting, which was fairly short, and they report some good news. They took in a little in excess of $25,000 in fees and other forms of revenue. They're in the process right now of closing it down for the year. They'll be moving the, all the floats and so forth. And they also had some very good sales of gasoline. And they're really looking forward to being able to sell ker- uh, car- diesel fuel, because they've had a number of people who have indicated they absolutely will come to the Elsworth Harbor to fuel up their boats with diesel fuel.
Help with the revenue stream.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other committees, representatives, reports this month? None. None. Citizens' comments, this portion of the meeting, we allow anyone in the audience to address the council on anything that's not contained on the agenda for a couple of minutes to bring it to our attention or ask. Yes, help yourself. Please identify yourself for the audience.
Hi, thanks. I'm Aaron Doherty. I'm the executive director of Frenchman Bay Conservancy. Just wanted to give a brief update on the Green Plan. We're part of the Green Plan Steering Committee, and I wanted to thank the city of Elsworth, including David and Gary and Michelle, city planner, for participating in the Steering Committee. Quick background on Frenchman Bay Conservancy, we're the regional land trust covering this area with a mission to conserve distinctive ecosystems, landscapes, and water resources for the benefit of all from the Union River and Frenchman Bay watersheds east of the Hancock County line. That includes places around here like Indian Point Preserve and also a conservation easement on the city's city forests at Branch Lake. The Green Plan is making some headway right now. We started off with some strong support at a couple of public hearings, people getting together and sort of talking about what they wanted to see included in the Green Plan. Out of that were distilled six focus areas, including green and conserve spaces, waterfront, waterways, and water management, sustainable management and environmental interface, waste management, recycling and composting, renewable energy, and sustainable development. So it's a partnership of a number of great organizations doing some really good work in the region, Heart of Elsworth, Frenchman Bay Conservancy, Downey Salmon Federation, Healthy Acadia, and of course, the city and others. Lastly, I just wanted to mention concurrent with the Green Plan development, the Frenchman Bay Conservancy is working with the Jordan family, this is Ralph Jordan and his siblings, to conserve a 30-acre property on the Bayside Road. It's going to be across from a property that the same family sold to Bird's Acre. So we'll have land that goes from Bayside down to the Union River. I say we will pending purchase of the property, which we're still fundraising for. And it would be a great conservation project, providing public access down to the river, providing recreation amenities as, you know, benefit for residents and visitors, and also a draw for people, the sort of, you know, amenities that businesses look for when they're hoping to relocate to the area and look for employees that want to be in this region. So we're really excited about that. Again, we are still fundraising. We had a really nice event there just a couple of weeks ago on October 1st. So without any further questions, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the council tonight? Take us, moving right along. Presentation of awards. We have two, two that are here tonight. Start with Adam Brackett, please. Do you come forward? City of Elsworth proudly presents this certificate of service to Adam Brackett. In recognition of your five years of service as a firefighter for the Elsworth Fire Department, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community, you have contributed to the improvement of the city of Elsworth, presented the 16th day of October, 2017. Thank you very much. And for you, sir, City of Elsworth proudly presents this certificate of service to Jody Frederick, in recognition of your 10 years of service as a firefighter for the Elsworth Fire Department. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community, you have contributed to the improvement of the city of Elsworth, presented the 16th day of October, 2017. Thank you very much. We also have one for Ray Robidoux for 30 years of service. I don't think he is present tonight. Won't be sure that he gets that. Thank you very much, Ray. Item nine, council order 101700, request of the de- oh, these are consent agenda items, and all of these will be approved, considered routine will be enacted as one motion unless someone who requires, requests one to be removed. Item nine is council order. Don't take it personal. Item nine, council order 101700, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector, to accept payments on tax-acquired timeshare units per the attached spreadsheet to authorize the city managers to release said properties through municipal quitclaim deeds. Item 10, council order 101701, request of the city assessor for abatement of fiscal year 2017 taxes assessed to Daniel and Suzanne Schechter, munis ID number 2738, the amount of $277.58 in interest and fees. Anyone on the council wish to remove any of those from the agenda? They have a motion on the consent agenda then, please.
So movement, Chairman?
Second.
Moves in second, all those in favor, unanimous.
Just a pointer.
Just a note, yeah, there were 50 timeshares.
50 timeshares sold since we reduced the price. That's incredible.
And what's that leave us with now, 300 or?
Two-ten.
Only 210 left.
Our paperweight 190.
Two-ten, two-twenty, not bad.
You gotta do something about that. But it looks good. The bottom line is.
Yeah, they're back on the tax rolls after sitting on our books for ages.
And some good revenue.
Eleven, public hearing in action on several licenses. I assume all those licenses here have met approval of fire, please. Everybody, everybody's happy. Good. First item, it's the Grand, 165 Main Street, for a new city Class B license, fictional for alcohol and amusement, a new state other auditorium theater, Class III and IV malt and vinous liquor license. Any questions from council? Do we have a representative here where this is a new license representing the Grand?
I am here.
And your name is, for the record?
Nick Turner, the executive director of the Grand.
That's who I thought it was. Thank you very much. Open the public hearing. Any input from the public on the request of the Grand for a new license for, seeing nobody jump at that opportunity, the public hearing is closed. Council action?
Questions?
Question, I'm sorry, sir. I asked early, you didn't pick it the first time.
Well, you didn't give me enough chance.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Beatham.
I guess my question is, why?
It is an added enjoyable element to a performance opportunity. We do so many different performances, including live music and theater and even the opera. And I did a quick informal surveying of even folks all the way down, even to the opera crowd that come in for a matinee, and a lot of them answered, we don't drink, but we would think that'd be a lovely addition to the, to the offering. It's going to be well managed. It's, it's definitely a missing revenue stream in the area of entertainment. The Grand is the only nonprofit theater in Maine that doesn't have one. And so it's, it is definitely a very needed revenue stream for the Grand.
Okay, and I have one comment about that. I mean, we as a council did not allow the Y to have liquor at the Moore Center. We always okay off-premises for them, but this is a nonprofit who receives tax dollars from City of Elsworth, and this may change how I view the tax dollars being spent for a nonprofit that has alcohol. And I just want everybody to be aware of that, because I don't feel that I have the right to spend tax dollars on someplace that somebody, somebody might object to, so.
Absolutely. It's a reasonable concern, and that, that is one of the, the challenges of, of a performing arts location, you know, and that's a very reasonable concern and was definitely well thought through, all the way down to the point of security and safety. And in my over 20 years of being in the performing arts, you're talking someone might enjoy a glass of wine in a four-hour period. This isn't a drinking establishment, it's just an enjoyable establishment. I was talking to someone who had that concern today, and my answer was, you'd work, you have to work really hard to get two down during entertainment at the Grand. So I don't think that will be that kind of issue, it'll be more of an enjoyment issue with a well-trained staff and very well-managed.
Now, what about youth?
They'll be, I mean, we'll follow every law that's in place. There'll be carding and there'll be careful monitoring. There's only, you know, there's only two ways into the auditorium, the lobby is, is covered. It's just training and professional handling. And the Grand to be a world-class performing arts center has to have that professional demeanor, as well as being able to offer something like this. And I, you know, one of my strongest motivations is basically that, the folks that would, might want to enjoy a beer or a glass of wine, and we're not, and we're talking very specialized things, very low volume, very low inventory, you know, it might be a microbrew, that sort of thing, to enjoy the thing. And the Criterion, I met with several of the executive directors of the different groups, they, they gave me all their best advice, and one of them was, they, they could pay their staff salaries off of their beer and wine. So it's, it's definitely a much-needed, and I do understand your concerns about tax dollars, but I tell you, I got to look at every opportunity I can to, to bring revenue into that, into the theater. But rest assured, it was very well thought out, and based on my experience, I'm confident we can handle it in a professional manner, we shouldn't have any issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Blatchett?
Nick, I have the very same concerns.
Yes.
But tax dollars are given to the Grand every year, and I'm sure there's a lot of taxpayers out there that would object to tax dollars being given to an establishment where liquor is going to be sold. And as much as what I like the Grand, I won't be able to vote for this.
Okay. Well, I understand. I got to tell you, I haven't, in my interaction with the public that patronizes the Grand, there wasn't one who expressed any concerns. In fact, it was highly encouraged.
But a lot of the taxpayers, I'm guessing, don't patronize, so you were, in my mind, you were asking one side of it.
Right, I was asking the folks that come to the Grand. You know, reasonable. But your concerns are very reasonable, absolutely.
Mr. Fortier.
I don't have that concern. We already give them off-premises catering to other businesses to come in and sell. That profit goes to the caterers. This way, it's going to be a funding source for the Grand. If we're going to go down that road, then the Taste of Elsworth doesn't get a license because Elsworth helps support it. So many other projects in the city that tax dollars go to that have off catering licenses, all licenses of their own. So I, I think, I don't agree with your premise on that, and I, I think the board of directors of the Grand is capable of keeping this under control, and I put my faith in them.
Done, Mr. Fortier. Mr. Beatham?
I will support it, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that future funding may be looked at harder. That's all I'm saying.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Comments or comments?
Yeah, I have a question for staff or council. Do we have any other agencies that we contribute to on an annual basis that have permanent liquor license, state and city license? Tried to research it on the weekend, I couldn't come up with any, but I just wondered if I'm missing, so. And for that reason, I don't think we should, and I'm concerned too about the youth events that go on there with our children, and I just think it's not necessary.
There wouldn't be any beer and wine offered when there are events with children. Any of the children's performances or children's movies or anything like that, it wouldn't be offered. It would be definitely carefully managed. And you brought up a really good point, if I want to bring in a very mature group, one of the, one of the key things that made me think of this was, I've made a great effort to reach out to other nonprofits to make the Grand accessible to them for their fundraising, not only the facility, but the ability to play movies, to have question and answers, to use the stage, extensively reached out to them. Well, the one thing I can add to that is, is when you bring your folks into a quality presentation or a film festival, that you're raising money for your folks, we can't offer them beer and wine. I can offer them popcorn and soda, and think of all the different functions you go to that raise money for, for different causes that have beer and wine available. Just kind of goes along with a sort of a, in perception, a quality offering in a higher, a higher element of attendees. If I, and you think of something like Woodlawn or any other organizations like that, that's a key element of their fundraising, is wine tasting or, or they have caterers. I've had caterers in with liquor licenses in this space, but that's what, I always have to go to that resource for it. It'd be better if we could manage it and make it offering, and it would, it would be definitely carefully managed. That's, that's the most I can encourage you in. I will, I will say that in my seven months of being here, I've never experienced a theater that doesn't have it, nonprofit or for-profit. Again, we're the only nonprofit theater in the state that doesn't have it. Every other one does, and it's a, it's a key access to revenues, and it, and you may not know this, the Grand needs it. The Grand is, it needs dramatic funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fortier.
Have you estimated what the revenue will be?
Um, you know, again, I, I don't know for sure, but I would say.
No, you wouldn't know for sure, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's never been done, it's never been used here before. I, all I know is from someone like the Criterion, and it's significant.
Mr. Ross, are you satisfied? Or you've got, Mr. Fortier?
Just a technical question, I'm sure staff checked it, distance to house of worship is all set, and is that because they use the front door, not the back corner as a measurement?
Yeah, the airline was fine, and that farther down in the airline, it's front door, the
Any further concerns, any further discussion amongst council? All those in favor of the motion? Opposed, two opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item is Louise Joy and Thomas Joy doing business as Edward Joy and Sons, 129 North Street, for renewal of his city junkyard and automobile graveyard permit, an ongoing operation. Questions from council? Public hearing is now open, any input from the public for the request of the joys to renew their license? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, council action on the.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
All those in favor, unanimous. Next item, James B. Card II doing business as Jimbo Junkin, 62 Kylie's Way, for renewal of his city junkyard automobile graveyard permit. Questions from council? Public hearing on the request of James Card to renew his license for the automobile graveyard, any questions or input from the public? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, council action?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Moves in second, but all those in favor, unanimous. Next item, Daniel C. Potts doing business as Lakeside Cedar Cabins, 397 Marival Road, for renewal of a class, city lodging license. Council questions? Then a public hearing is now open, input from the public or the request of Daniel Potts for renewal? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, council action?
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, unanimous. Last item under this is Ron Roland Evil doing business at Sunset Motor Court, 210 Twin Hill Road, for renewal of his city lodging license. Council questions? Seeing none, public hearing is now open, any input from the public from the request of the Sunset Motor Court for renewal? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, council action?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request from Roland Evil.
Second.
All those in favor, unanimous. Item 12, public hearing in action on an amendment to the City of Elsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, general assistance ordinance. Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Same old as last year or every year at this time?
Yeah. My name is Katrina Howes, I'm the new director. I'm here to present the new maximums for the general assistance ordinance. There were a few increases, such as the overall household was $40 per person, an increase in the general assistance. Food maximums was a 53 cent increase, and the housing maximums was $10, increase, that's per person. There was no change to the electric, the heating fuel, the personal care and household supplies, and supplies for smaller children. There was no change.
So this is our annual update from the state, more or less, here you go, you're going to like it.
Pretty much, yeah. The only, the only thing was, this is the first increase to the persons in the household in a long time. It's probably been about three or four years. Otherwise than that, usually there's small changes to like the food portion of it. That is about the same, there really hasn't been much of an increase in the past few
Council questions on there?
Just a clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This ordinance comes to us from Maine Municipal.
Maine Municipal, correct.
They compile the rules and present this, it doesn't come from the state.
Further questions? Open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open on the amendment of the Elsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, the general assistance ordinance. Any questions or input from the public on this? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Council action on the, on the item, please.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the amendments to City of Elsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, general assistance, as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Can I ask a question just before you put the vote?
Yes, sir.
I wonder if we could request that another year, we get a chart to show comparison of like past year to the present maximums, just so that, it makes a whole lot easier than getting seven or eight pages.
Just sorry, it's two different things.
And I, I've already spoken to.
I agree.
Our TA director on this, so.
Good clarification, yeah.
Thank you.
It is easier than bouncing.
Can I also mention one other thing? We're, oh, sorry.
All those in favor, unanimous, okay.
I just wanted to mention, we're doing the auction again this year for our Fuel Assistance Fund, and it starts November 1st and it runs through the 30th, so if anyone wants to come out, please bid or donate, come on down.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing, coming tonight, taking care of this. Thank you very much. Item 13, council order 101702, request reward at contract ABM Mechanical Incorporated for repairs and modifications to the heating HVAC system at the Moore Community Center. Good evening, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Joy was unable to attend the meeting this evening, therefore I'll be presenting this. So the Moore Community Center has been having some heating and cooling issues, where the system's not functioning properly and unable to maintain comfortable or adequate temperatures. The YMCA and the city had met with several vendors to look at solving the issue. We did decide on ABM Mechanical, and they did a thorough investigation analysis on the system. ABM feels the most cost-effective method is to modify the existing system rather than to add to it. So the scope of the work includes consulting with the manufacturer of the system to make those modifications, as well as install CO2 sensors in the rooms. This will allow the rooms to adequately heat and cool the spaces that are actually occupied at the time. They're also hoping for some energy reductions by doing this. Included in your packet is the proposal, as well as the work that they'll, that will be performed. There's a $20,000 cap on the project, and the bill will be for time and materials only. This was an unbudgeted item, so this is going to need to come from the reserves. $6,800 will come from the Moore Community Center reserves, and the remaining will come from the General Capital Reserve Fund, which currently has a balance of $197,000 in it.
Thank you. Council comments or questions? We've reviewed this, this, heating issues have been an ongoing problem since the end of construction. Mr. Fortier?
This has fallen back to some of the work that I did with Ray Plumbin back in 30 years ago, optimizing systems, and that's what this is. Right now, we have fresh air intake that is running all the time, whether the CO2 level from all the rugrats breathing or not, so this is going to sense that, turn these fans on and off as needed. So I, this is interesting to see them recommend this.
Very eloquently presented, too. Thank you, Mr. Fortier. Any other comments? Mr. Blatchett?
As I understand it, we have a cap of $20,000, and it may or may not fix the issue. Is that correct?
Yes, we discussed this, Mr. Cole, if you want to address that?
This is the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, as Councilor Fortier noted. We're over-exchanging fresh air in the system, and it's expensive to heat that, so they want to try this, see if it will work and solve the problem. It may not go far enough, there may be additional improvements that need to be made or not, but either way, this is something that needs to be done, and it may solve the problem on its own.
It's that word "may."
Well, but it needs to be done regardless, because we're heating a lot of fresh air unnecessarily, so it, the economic, it'll pay for itself, these improvements through lower energy costs.
Which the Y covers.
Right, but.
Correct.
But either way, it's a.
It's our building.
It's an efficiency issue, and. It's an efficiency issue and, and it, it may work, but we just wanted you to be prepared that it may not get us all the way there. But either way, these improvements should be made.
It'll make a difference whether it makes an adequate, the same amount. And it's the same thing, Mark. We're relying on people to look at that, that have some functional knowledge of it, of that type of system. And we have to put some faith in their work. Mr. Beetham?
I think that ABM is going at this the right way because they're going to use the existing equipment and make it as efficient as possible before telling us we need to do something else. So if we can make this as efficient as possible and it works, fine. If it doesn't, we are still going to use the efficiency that it's been built in. It's not a waste. So there may be some additional things in the future, but at least this is going to make it as efficient as it possibly can be using the equipment that's already there and the people who manufactured the equipment.
Mr. Fortier?
And in doing so, that next step you have to take is gonna be a smaller step.
Yeah, correct.
Correct. The, the intent here is to solve the problem as much as we can through, through the existing system before we try to augment it with additional heating and ventilation.
A lot of companies would just come in and say, well, you need to replace the whole thing and it's gonna cost you a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So, you know, this is, this is the proper way to do it. This is the proper way to do it.
That's the first step. Mr. Moore?
In agreeing with what you're saying, this whole idea is kind of the offspring of what historically Americans did to achieve all kinds of tremendous success in the late eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds. Rather than sit around in a room and talk something to death, they got, rolled up their sleeves, worked on it, fixed it. If that didn't work, they tweaked it with something else until they got it to work. And as you adequately pointed out, that it isn't gonna be money that's wasted if you have to build on it.
Any further comments? Council action on the request?
Mr. Chairman, move that the council approve the award of a contractor, ABM Mechanical Incorporated, for repairs and modifications to the HVAC system of the Moore Community Center, cap of twenty thousand dollars, time and material? Yes. Oh, to be funded. Computers are so slow. This project is funded from the Moore Community Center reserve account in the amount of sixty-eight hundred dollars and the General Capital Reserve account in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Blanchett opposed. Motion carries. Item 14, Council Order 101703, Request of the Wastewater Superintendent to enter into a sludge composting contract for the disposal of the City of Ellsworth sludge from the wastewater treatment plant with DM&amp;J Waste.
Mr. Chair, the wastewater superintendent had a family obligation tonight, so I will be presenting this. It was interesting that Aaron Doherty in the public comments tonight was talking about the Green Plan and the Green Committee and about composting. And they were delighted to find out that there is a proposal in the community to establish a commercial composting facility. This particular case, this is a startup company, venture, but, but it's not a startup company. As a matter of fact, Representatives The Wellmans, the principals of DM&amp;J are here tonight and they've done business with the city for several years by the transfer station and well-known to the community. The wastewater superintendent is requesting that you authorize the city manager to enter into a new hauling and composting agreement with DM&amp;J for their commercial composting facility that's under construction out near the Ellsworth Transfer Station. This contract would be to take the city's biosolids from the wastewater treatment plant, which would have the added benefit of helping this new venture get off the ground. DM&amp;J is in the process of permitting the commercial compost facility. And all that remains, I believe, is the DEP permit. And they're hopeful and we're hopeful that that will be coming, forthcoming shortly. This agreement, of course, with the city would be predicated on receipt and maintenance of all necessary permits, including the DEP permit. The second in the agreement, which you have in your packet, there is a backup arrangement if, for whatever reason, they can't continue to fulfill the requirements of the agreement. The backup would be Casella, which is our current provider, who, by the way, does a fine job, but they're located, their facility in Unity, some miles away. Looking at the numbers, I had the wastewater superintendent run the numbers for me. Under our current agreement with Casella, the cost of composting and hauling the waste to the compost facility is an average cost per load of fourteen hundred and fifty-two dollars. Under DMJ's pricing, that same average load would be thirteen hundred and twenty dollars or a savings of a hundred and thirty-two dollars and six cents per load. Given that the city generally does about sixty-six loads per year, this would be an annual savings of eighty-seven hundred and sixteen dollars. And obviously, that savings is largely accrued to the fact that the facility will now be in Ellsworth versus hauling it to Unity. The fact that the agreement, the agreement also, as proposed, is five years versus what is typically three, but under the circumstances, this is a startup venture that the city, you know, has a strong interest in seeing happen. So I think under the circumstances, that's a reasonable request for a five-year term. It has built into it cost of living increases. As you would expect, there's also, for example, a surcharge if the city delivers sludge that is below eighteen percent solid. And that's typical of these types of contracts. Finally, our legal counsel has reviewed the contract and their suggestions were incorporated into the agreement. And finally, note that while this is first and foremost a contractual service, this has the added benefit of being a new business to the city that will pay taxes and benefit local people in, in the course of doing business. I will also provide a service outlet for compost to companies in the area that are involved in organic materials, whether that's other towns who have sludge, restaurants, agricultural, fishing industry. And it could, we're very hopeful that this will help remove certain odors that come from time to time at our transfer station as this material could go directly to the commercial compost facility, which will be much better equipped to deal with it than we currently are. So that's the agreement. I'm sure the Wellmans would entertain any questions you may have about what they're going to be doing. I know that they, once they have the DEP permit, they wanna be up and operating in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Had the agreement to review buried in our packets. Discussion, questions? Mr. Fortier?
I was up in the yard this weekend. Visited the old man. Things are coming along very well up there. Looks like they're gonna have a quality place, easy in, easy out. I'm excited about it. I'm, I'm excited about the possibilities of, in the future, tying residential composting in if we can find a way to deliver in bulk instead of having little baggies come in every day. But we could, there's a possibility that, long-term, we could reduce our solid waste footprint going to Perk by getting the garden waste, leave waste and stuff like that out of our waste stream and, and put it into a compost recipe. So I, I'm in support of this. We've, some of us that are on in this council for a number of decades, remember we've tried before and failed to get a, a business up and running. And now that it's a private concern that we can support, I'm tickled, think.
I would add that the organics are somewhere around thirty percent of our waste stream. And so by taking that out, we will save money in terms of sending it to Perk.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Everybody satisfied? Do we have a motion?
And we collect taxes on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with DM&amp;J Waste, contingent upon DM&amp;J Waste carrying all necessary permits and licensing necessary to operate per the residual management service agreement that's been presented to us tonight.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Just one, I'd, I'd ask, just give us three days to review the finished contract before you sign it. Like you usually, I mean, that's not in the motion, I'm not, but, you know, some people that proof that stuff see it, see it differently. So it'd be nice if we had good, clean copy.
Yep. And I would say that unless DEP is imminent in the next two or three days, we, we have that time. But I would note that this does incorporate legal counsel's review, so.
We've caught them on mistake.
Oh, yes, absolutely. And our, and our own, and our own writing.
Okay?
Yep.
Motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Off we go.
Thank you for coming, yes.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It's nice to see progress. I was up there the other day with some stuff. Good to see you finally getting some to go on.
We're hoping within the thirty days, we'll be up and running, so.
Good deal. Great. Thanks again.
Come on by some compost.
Next spring.
Item 15, Council Order 101704, Request of the Public Works Directive to award the bid for a new excavator.
Good evening. I'm Wilson, Public Works Director. On October 6th, we opened up bids. We had three bids come back for the excavator, one with Chadwick and Bayross, Milton Cat, Jordan Equipment. Jordan Equipment didn't meet spec, so that's why the price is not showing here. Chadwick and Bayross Volvo was sixty-five thousand, which was the lowest of the two bids. And I'm requesting that the council approves Chadwick and Bayross bid for the Volvo.
That, and that is, as I read through that, has the twist wrists and everything we needed, wanted. And is, does have enough reach to dump into the back of the wheelers?
I have been told it does.
I see the numbers on that, the height and the depth are very similar to what the Caterpillar had to offer. The money was very similar also. And that does include the five-year warranty?
Five-year warranty and it also includes a machine. If we award the bid tonight, we can pick up this week and use until the new excavator comes in at no charge.
I see that window is ninety days, I think on there, thirty on the cap. This is, this was in their budget from this spring anyway. Council questions on the request for the new excavator, the mini? Oh, yes, ma'am.
I just caught something on here.
I recall. Yeah? Where it's gonna come from? Yes, in the most, what's Tammy caught too, in the motion, sixty-five thousand to be paid from the Highway Department Capital Improvement Account. Only half of the sixty-five is coming out of the highway. The other half is coming out of the Ellsworth Water Department Capital Improvement Account. We're sharing the cost of it because we use the excavator all the time doing, excuse me, our water leaks and stuff. And that's how we pay back the city for the use of the equipment and stuff. Let's help out.
All right, yes, it is. Because that is a shared piece of equipment. They would be, and will be used across all...
We share all our equipment.
All the equipment, yeah.
We feel, we, we feel we should pay for part of it.
Yeah, and it should. Fortier?
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request to award the purchase of a new mini excavator for the Public Works Department and the Water Department to the low bidder Chadwick Bayross at a total cost of sixty-five thousand. Cost to be split between the Highway Equipment Capital Improvement Account and the Water Department Capital Improvement Account.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Item 16, Council Order 101705, Request of the Police Chief to approve the purchase of an unmarked utility vehicle for the Ellsworth Police Department. Chief?
Hello, gentlemen. Chief of Police Glenn Mosher. And I'm here in front of you tonight to discuss some options. In your packet, you were presented with one particular option for a vehicle. This is a little bit of a different routine than normal. We didn't have the ability to put out for bid the specific vehicle because, quite frankly, we didn't really know exactly what we wanted for a vehicle. So what we did is we contacted the local dealerships and gave them a parameter of a vehicle type that we were interested in with a mileage concern and, and basically let them do the, do the, do the work for us. And they came back with several different vehicles. And when I say local, I'm talking about we contacted Lee Auto, contacted Linehan and Darlings. And Darlings was the only dealership, or not the only, but came back with the newest vehicles with the fewest mile, the lowest mileage. And so what I presented in the packet was for a 2016 Nissan Rogue, which had twenty-four thousand, six hundred miles on it. And since the preparation, preparation for tonight's meeting, Darlings has come up with a second vehicle, which is very similar. It's a 2017 GMC Terrain. It's an all-wheel-drive, smaller SUV. It meets all of our needs as far as the compartment goes for storage in the back. And it's an all-wheel-drive vehicle, like I said. And that has twenty-four, just over twenty-four thousand miles on it as well. My recommendation, if the council approves, would be to go with the GMC. The reasoning being that it has a little bit larger storage compartment in the back. It also provides more passenger compartment legroom for some of our officers who are, who are taller in stature. The vehicle also would be serviced locally because we have the, of course, Darlings GMC right here in Ellsworth, so we wouldn't have to take it to Bangor for any recalls or any type of servicing where we would the Nissan. The original, my original budget, if you recall, was for fifteen thousand to be spent on this vehicle. And I unfortunately woefully underestimated the value of used vehicles. And so the process, we started with fifteen thousand and what we were looking at and what we were getting back from dealerships were for all Terrain, for all-wheel-drive, smaller SUVs, you were looking at anywhere from, for fifteen thousand dollar range, you were talking anywhere from the high forties to the sixty thousand mile range. And the mileage was just really something we weren't comfortable with. Darlings presented us with the options of the sixteen and now the 2017 with, with far fewer mile, miles, higher price tag. And so I consulted with Financial Director Tammy Moat and we had some savings in our Cruiser Fund, which allowed us the additional funding if the council approves us to spend it on this vehicle.
Price of the Terrain the same as the Rogue?
Yes, they're both eighteen thousand.
And the Terrain is a 2017?
2017, correct.
And that's just, we had the discussion how to do this, maybe the finance? Is there something we decided rather than we normally do new? But then thought it was a good idea to perhaps go on for something relatively new. There might be a substantial savings. I assume that that Terrain new is probably a forty or forty-five thousand dollar vehicle?
Yeah, it's, well, I just looked online. I didn't, I didn't consult with, with Darlings. But starting price for the SL, SLE1, which is the model, is twenty-seven, three.
Twenty-seven, three, time to be, so it'd be thirty, thirty.
Plus.
Yeah, it'd be thirty. Mr. Fortier?
I'll tell you, I, I rent terrains from them all the time for my trips to Augusta, MMA. They're very com- They're a very comfortable car, they ride well, I think you'd be very pleased with this one. It's probably one I've driven.
It, it may be, 'cause they're actually taking it out of their rental fleet.
Yeah.
That's where the vehicle's coming from.
And that fits your description as an undercover car?
Yeah, well, the, you know, the, the terrains are, are very popular. There's a lot of them on the road, so it certainly, it certainly blends, um, so it does...
And it's not some vivid color, I assume?
It's not, it's, it's a blue, so it's, it's pretty, pretty normal to see terrains around, um, so it does fit that requirement, um, and it's, it's certainly not a police vehicle. I, I've never seen an off, a police officer driving a Terrain on duty marked up, so, so yeah, it, it did fit our requirements.
Mr. Blanchett?
Chief, is there any kind of a, uh, warranty with this?
It would, it would come with the, uh, the remainder of the factory warranty, which is thirty-six thousand, three years, so we've, it's, of course, not even a year old yet, so we've got the remainder of that factory warranty.
Uh, Mr. Moore?
I, I understand that, uh, you can buy extended warranties.
Yes.
I don't know how economically feasible that is.
I, yeah, I didn't, uh, that's, I mean, I haven't gotten that far into the consultation with, with Darlings, but it's certainly something that we could look into in the purchase of the vehicle.
Also, we're gonna address that at a later time.
I, uh, I drive a Chrysler minivan, but you didn't want one of those, huh?
One was not offered to us. Like I said, again, we, we really left the parameters wide open. Our requirements were all-wheel-drive and something that had adequate room for four adults and storage, so, and...
Perhaps your minivan's not all-wheel-drive, but it does have room for, for kids' seats, right?
Yeah, but dog links.
Go to soccer games.
Yeah, soccer. You know, just call me anytime if you need more information on minivans.
Will do. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I personally think that this is a stroke of genius. We're, um, talking about one vehicle, but keep in mind, it's gonna be used for conducting covert operations, so now we've switched.
Yeah. It worked.
Keep 'em confused.
Keep 'em confused. Mr. Fordyear?
You ready?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the police chief to purchase a two thousand seventeen GMC Terrain, all-wheel-drive from Darlings Auto Mall in Ellsworth, in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars to be funded from the Police Cruiser Capital Improvement Account.
Second. Moving second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Abstaining? Mr. Beathen abstains, motion carries. Room seventeen adjournment?
To move.
I'm gonna stay here all night.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous.